In that case, we will call it the order of the Monday, April 27, 2015, regular board meeting of the town of Pittsburgh Board of Commissioners and as we begin with the Thank you. Commissioner Frerling, can anyone rise for his question?
I believe this is due to the flag of the United States of America, to a community republic for which saints, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
The first order of business would be the consent agenda, and we have four items on there. The minutes for April 13. We have a budget ordinance, create a restricted fund for the NC retirement community program. We also have a budget amendment for transferring funds from capital reserves, which there has been a pin change on. We all got a revised version of that. The original one did not balance correctly, and our finance officer has adjusted the item number three so that it balances with item four. Unless we have any objections, we can leave that on the consent agenda with that correction. And then the final one, ordinance to approve your appropriate funds for the police department for the vehicle financing that we approved in the prior region. So, your motion to approve consent agenda is presented.
I would like to pull item three. I've got a couple of questions on that. I guess we can make that number one of new business?
Sure. Okay. Okay, with that change, with item three pulled and moved to new business, do I hear a motion to adopt the consent agenda? Does that move?
That moves.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? If you're not opposed, the consent agenda is modified, and item three is approved. Citizens Matters, nobody signed up for Citizens Matters. Bring this to our first business is the, a public hearing to amend zoning ordinances that was planned development district, amend subdivision regulations to make appropriate references to accommodate the planned development zoning district, and to amend section 10.4.3B of the zoning ordinance to conform its wording to the wording section 168-383 of the North Carolina general statutes. Do you hear a motion to go into public hearing? Does that move? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? If you're not opposed, we are in a private hearing. Mr. Mandar, would you introduce it, or is it a little?
I'll set the table quickly, and then I'll turn it over. Paul has, Mr. Messick has any comments?
Pardon, could you speak a little louder, please? Nobody came through there back there.
Yeah, sorry. If you could, I'll set the table quickly, and then if Mr. Messick has any additional comments, then he's certainly able to make them. Again, the purpose tonight is to hold a public hearing on the proposed ordinances. In the memo, I identified a couple of the changes. The substantial changes are actually occurring in section 10.4.3, Town Board Action, paragraph D. You can see those down at the bottom of the page. The red line represents the changes. The other items were, get my first couple reads of what we had, appeared that those conditions appear to be new, and those in fact were approved back on April 13. Or, excuse me, back on, back in April of 2013. And for whatever reason, with one of the paragraphs did not show up in my version that we had, so that's why I tried to mark that out in my memo. But I guess I would point you to the substantial changes. I guess I call them that actually occurring in 10.4.3, Town Board Action, paragraph D. You can see that on the top of my memo when I said changes. Again, public hearing. With that, I would turn it over to Mr. Messick for any of his comments or clarifications or otherwise words of wisdom for this evening.
The first two amendments, members of the board, is our-
We can't hear you back here. We cannot hear you. That's part of the plan. Figure that.
The first two amendments that are in the public hearing relate to this. One is to the zoning ordinance that essentially is the same proposal that was for the creation of the planned development district that was done by the board in April of 2013. The only differences are the formatting and the exchange of numbers for bullets and some of the text. The other is a subdivision amendment that conforms. Both of those were adopted by the board previously in 2013. The second amendment, the third, the second amendment to the zoning ordinance is for section 10.4.3B, which conforms the ordinance to the current state statutes regarding the consistency plan and when it is to be submitted to you all for approval. Essentially, that's what the board cannot.
If you have any questions, I'll proceed to call the first speaker. Any questions from the board?
I'd like to just get, make sure I'm clear on this. And I think what I heard described is, the document is, is the same document that was adopted previously, but for those changes that are in red and green for 10.4.3, Town Board Action. Very, thank you.
Any other questions? Yeah, I'll remind our speakers that there's a three-minute time limit, and I'll be your timekeeper as usual. We have nine speakers signed up to speak, first being Dee Reed.
Thank you, Mayor. Are you going to give me a 30-second time up or something?
I can do that.
Okay.
May I could you do that?
That's great. Dee Reed, 590 Old Goldston Road in Pittsboro. By my counting, this is the second time you've had to conduct an additional public hearing because of deficiencies identified in Pittsboro Matters lawsuit concerning Chatham Park. I believe this is happening because you have lost control of the planning process by allowing one property owner, Chatham Park Investors, to rush you into poor decision-making that has ignored the interests of hundreds of local property owners, probably over 2,000 actually, in Pittsboro and the ETJ, i.e. all of us who already live, work, and play here. And in doing this, you have ceded control of our community's future to two developers in Cary. I respectfully implore you to take this opportunity to regain control of Pittsboro's planning process before it's too late. Many of us were very pleased when you approved most of the recommendations made by the Lawrence Root consultant and most of the citizens who had testified in public hearings, but we were baffled and disappointed when you suddenly changed your mind, because the developers said they could not go along with some of those conditions. You allowed the developers to essentially write the planned development district, which we are discussing today, and the master plan that would govern their development. And you turned your backs on the reasonable and standard recommendations of local citizens and your own expert consultant, recommendations that include the kinds of conditions that other much smaller developments have had to abide by in Pittsboro, Chatham County, throughout the triangle, and across the nation. Major developments are usually required to provide an environmental impact assessment, transportation analysis, affordable housing, public school planning, and commitments to contribute land or other resources for the construction of those public schools, not Chatham Park, the largest mixed-use development in the history of North Carolina. It still puzzles me as to why this is happening. You seem afraid that Chatham Park would turn and run if they were asked to heed the same requirements they faced in Cary, where they have been doing business for years. Now you have a third opportunity to get this right, to take back control of the planning process by listening to the experts you've hired and the citizens who live here who have pleaded for more conditions to protect the community we all share and love. I recommend that instead of putting a small Band-Aid on the PDD, you should create a new PDD or a similar instrument by working closely with all stakeholders, including the general public, not just the developers. To do this, I recommend that you engage a consultant, perhaps Roger Walden of Clarion Associates, who's already working with you on the UDO.
30 seconds.
He's aware of the best practices of Chapel Hill's development agreement for Obie Creek. Ideally, we could all be working together with you, along with a consultant, other local residents of Pittsboro, and the ETJ, and yes, the developers too. What Pittsboro needs now most at this time is a balanced, accountable process that addresses the needs of all property owners and residents, not just the two developers from Cary. It will be hard work to do this, to balance all the needs and interests of our current and future community. We're ready to begin. We hope that you are too. Thank you.
Next speaker is Jeffrey Starkweather.
Commissioner, our citizens, we all understand the charade this public hearing on a new PDD is intended to be, especially given that we are presented with essentially the same flawed developer craft of ordinance designed to give Chatham Park investors maximum flexibility to possibly put forward another blank slate, trust us, PDD master plan. Of course, this public hearing on the revised PDD technically gives this board an opportunity to pass a much better large mixed-use development district, such as the development agreement district ordinance that Chapel Hill has recently been codifying and been using the process of 2013. Pittsboro has already contracted, as Dee Reed said, with a consultant who's working on the UDO, Roger Walden, who, as you may know, was a former planning director of Chapel Hill, who could help us craft an ordinance that would fit our needs. I hesitate, however, to make this recommendation, since we all know what happened the last time the town contracted with an expert planning consultant to review and provide recommendations concerning the PDD master plan. But what choice the citizens of Pittsboro have? But to play Charlie Brown again, hoping this time Lucy doesn't pull the ball out from us again. Regardless, I think it's important to remind ourselves of the history of how this original ordinance came about. We know now that the PDD ordinance was developed by Chatham Park Investors back in December 2012, before the town. It was passed essentially the same ordinance in April 8. Not surprisingly, completely ignored the action step that you all put into your land use plan, calling for a public process and charade using the Southwest Shore's assessment to craft a plan for Chatham Park. Of course, this action step was never mentioned any time throughout the discussion of the PDD. Moreover, the public was never made aware that it was even going to be a public hearing on the PDD. That would actually affect a $55,000, 55,000 resident development, sorry. How would anyone know that PDD had anything to do with Chatham Park? I certainly didn't, despite the fact that I was on a committee for the county, with the county, with your planner, at that time, working on a scenario planning for Chatham County.
30 seconds.
That's why no citizen showed up to hear. At the time, the only explanation by the planner to the public hearing was that this was a, gave the developer a lot of flexibility. That's certainly an understatement. Also, no one informed them that the vote of the planning board was 4 to 2, and people on the planning board objected to it for the same reasons that we have. Only one person spoke, a Chapel Hill resident, Paul Pepper, the developer's attorney, I mean, excuse me, planner.
Your time has expired. Please wrap it up, sir.
Okay. Just have two sentences to read. Does it shock anyone to learn that during the same time period, the citizens of Chapel Hill were being presented a best practices development agreement process to govern mixed-use developments much smaller than Chatham Park? We cannot go back and undo this unfortunate past, but tonight's hearing does give us an opportunity to put Pittsboro and its citizens back in the driver's seat for future development of Chatham Park in Pittsboro. Thank you.
Next speaker is Amanda Robertson.
My name is Amanda Robertson. I live at 244 Prince Creek in Pittsboro. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of Pittsboro Matters. First off, this is essentially the same PDD ordinance that was approved in April 2013, which was crafted by Chatham Park Investors to provide the standards, approval process, and implementation procedures for their proposed 55,000 resident development. As Town Commissioner Michael Fiocco stated when he proposed this public hearing at the tail end of the March 23 board meeting, followed by a closed-door session with the town attorney, his purpose is to cure deficiencies alleged by Pittsboro Matters in its lawsuit challenging the validity of the PDD ordinance and Chatham Park PDD master plan and rezoning. We all know where this is headed, but I will nonetheless appeal to you all to consider the following two alternatives, and remind you that these procedural issues regarding the PDD ordinance do not represent all of the claims in our lawsuit. However, by pursuing one of the alternatives outlined here, you have an opportunity to address many, perhaps even all of them. The two choices include having a consultant revise the existing PDD to eliminate its obvious shortcomings, or better yet, take the Chapel Hill Development Agreement District and recraft it to work here in Pittsboro. Option one, revise the PDD ordinance. One, require environmental, traffic, fiscal, and socioeconomic impact assessments for the overall design of the development. The current ordinance fails to require any of these. Two, follow the town's land use plan passed in October 2012 that specifically provides that the town will work with the developers of Chatham Park to develop an area plan with public process and design charade that builds on the Southwest Shore assessment. Three, include specific standards. The current PDD is unconstitutionally vague with no standards for determining the adequacy of utility, stormwater, public service, multimodal transportation, recreation and open space, boundary buffers, and phasing plans. Four, require design standards. Five, require landscaping, affordable housing, tree protection, public arts, and other similar plans for approval of the master plan. Six, require a development agreement that includes citizen input. Seven, balance the wins for both the town, town citizens, and the developer. This ordinance provides maximum flexibility to the developer while not requiring the developer to give back to the town substantial benefits in return. Option two, adopt a developer agreement district similar to Chapel Hill's has been recommended already this evening. It would not be crafted by the developers and instead-
30 seconds.
...would be overseen by an unbiased outside professional planning consultant who can make sure Pittsboro's public interests are paramount. It would require an environmental, fiscal, socioeconomic, and traffic impact assessment for the overall development. It would allow for development and approval of conceptual master plan followed by significant citizen input before proceeding to a detailed plan and development agreement. It would include substantial citizen input throughout the process. It would allow no construction until the final master plan and development agreement are approved, and flexibility would be balanced to address the needs of the developer for innovative design and for the citizens and community concerns.
Your time has expired. Please wrap up.
Thank you. We hope you will strongly consider these recommendations. Thank you, on behalf of the Pittsboro Matters Board of Directors.
Next speaker is Gloria Horowitz.
Hey, that's George Horowitz.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay. I've been living in Vinum-
Glad you're old and you're writing these bads.
Well, my father was a doctor, so I'm innocent.
We'll take credit for that one.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
I've lived in Vinum for 43 years, long enough to understand that I should not expect transparency or enlightened thinking from elected officials. So I'm disgusted, but not at all astonished to find myself standing here chasing the whole, I'm so long since Pittsboro, so easily welcoming that hilariously stupid product called, project called Chatham Park. The very names suggest tremendously bubbling branches of fear of water running through forests of oak, hickory, and dogwood, woodlands full of impregative little deer, cubbies of plump quail, harmless black swans in pursuit of brown mice. The reality will soon be clear-cut land from Highway 64 down to the Hall River, cutesy-cooed little paved streets with cul-de-sacs studded with hideous McMansions with predictably inappropriate shrubberies, phantom schools for thousands of children, IHOP, Navy, Walmart, whatever, populated by mobs of well-paid refugees from Calcutta, Shanghai, and, in fact, New Jersey, spending huge gobs of cash, paying big taxes, and endlessly complaining that poor little Pittsboro will never be a Cary. I am practically, I'm not standing here with my hat in my hands asking you to scrub the whole Chatham Park fantasy. I know better. I know you won't. Too much money is involved, but I can't resist asking, who profits from this idiotic fantasy? Anyone in this room? Anyone, anywhere? Who?
My girl.
Of course. I see insufficient evidence that our elected officials have adequately exhumed and questioned the ramifications of their fantasy, so I ask you to reconsider the concerns of your constituents. By that, let me be clear, I mean the people who live in Pittsboro now, not other residents in Chatham County like me. People like me and my neighbors. A few years ago, the Town Board of Commissioners waved a magic wand and made a huge part of Chatham County their extraterritorial jurisdiction, gave themselves the right to tell the fellow first that it was okay to shave the forest, pollute our Hall River, drink Jordan Lake dry, and fill up our roads with snotty kids careening around and spending-
30 seconds.
Right. Thank you. Fortunately for the town, I have no interest in waving my own magic wand there in Pittsboro or my extraterritorial jurisdiction, so, sorry, not interested. I am, however, interested in the town commissioners saw a big old deal coming down the road, carload of developers and a truckload of money, so they waved their little wand and yielded all in. I might not mind if it does not affect my friends and me, and if we're not completely undemocratic, we have no voice in this decision. We have no voice now except-
Time has expired, so please wrap up.
Sure. Except in the privilege of standing here talking, thank you for your courtesy and your indulgence, I do not envy you having to sit here and listen to boring people like me who cannot vote for you, and yet will be forever damaged by this enormous and utterly ridiculous project you have approved. You must know, I insist that you understand, this is not democracy. This is oligarchy, where the rich folks and their fancy lawyers call the shots. So I ask you to break with the past, stop playing parts of forgettable fawns in a banana republic, and respect yourselves and your neighbors. Take us into account. We matter, so would you. Thank you.
Next speaker is Liz Collington.
My name is Liz Collington. I live at 390 Rocky Hills Road, Pittsboro. I'm inside the ETJ. I guess Chatham Park's lawyers agree that there was something wrong with how the PDD language was adopted two years ago, so it has to be done again today. That means that none of the Chatham Park master plans are actually valid either, so you'll have to take another vote on that as well. So you actually have a chance to fix the problems with the original PDD language instead of making the same mistake over again and getting a better plan as a result. Chatham Park's lawyers don't really want you to fully understand this, and they don't want you to do that, because Chatham Park has currently got such a great deal. Their ultimate client is the developer, not the town, I mean, the lawyer's client is the developer, not the town, town residents or current future taxpayers. We've already seen what problems were caused by this proposed PDD language. It allowed a developer to submit inadequate plans and to resist many major changes because of the PDD's apparent lack of teeth. This proposed language also contradicts at least five recommendations of your UDO contractor regarding PDD zoning, including ensuring an actual phasing plan, open space and buffer mounts in the master plan, and consistency with a similar district to any PDD zoning. You could try to close all the loopholes that Chatham Park has found in this PDD, though they would find more. You could give the town authority to designate conservation areas on a site-specific basis, require affordable housing at each stage, require traffic analysis. I could, go on and on, but that is like trying to tweak a bad master plan. Rather than passing the original language or even amending it, you do have the chance to start over entirely. And what's more, it appears that Chatham Park's lawyers have essentially opened that door for you. I agree, the town of Chapel Hill's Development Agreement District provides an excellent model for the kind of zoning language that's more appropriate for a development of this magnitude and long duration, and is a far better starting point. The proposed change to the subdivision ordinance is absolutely stunning, as it would exempt the PDD from all subdivision regulations once the master plan is approved. This is not what Chatham Park previously agreed. It appeared that they agreed to conform to certain aspects of our current regulations and a future unified development ordinance.
30 seconds.
I urge you to reject this amendment as dangerous and unnecessary. As for Article 10 of the zoning ordinance, this may change language to match language in a state statute, but the statute does not require that this language be the language of our ordinance. Not all towns and counties have a land use plan or call it that. To eliminate reference to our land use plan is to render it toothless. Over the last two years, the developer has been less than fully cooperative. They have acted like we need them more than they need us, and embarked on construction that bears no resemblance to their supposed design goals, and have been bulldozing-
Time has expired. Please wrap up your comments.
They have been bulldozing areas for which no plans have been submitted. I urge you to stop doing what they and their lawyers tell you to do or suggest that you do, and take this golden opportunity to get in the wayback machine and produce a better quality planning process. Thank you.
Next speaker is Betsy Downing.
My name is Betsy Downing. I live at 86 Dover Road in Pittsboro. I've noticed and heard since moving here a year ago, a lot of comparisons to Chatham Park, to Reston, Virginia, and I lived there for 10 years. As I've heard the details of Chatham Park, it is not anything at all like Reston, Virginia. And as what everyone's said so far, the recommendations that they've made is what Reston, Virginia was like. So I wanted to share that it was conceived as a planned community by Robert E. Simon, and it was founded in April of 1964. The first section of the community to be built was Lake Anne Plaza, and it was designed to emulate a coastal town, Portofino, an Italian coastal town of Portofino. It was designed with modern architectural themes. It extended to an elementary school, to a gas station, to two churches. They also had an art gallery there, several restaurants, the historic Reston Trust Museum, shops, and the senior citizens fellowship house. All the businesses were local. There were no big businesses allowed. There were no big chains, so it had really very much of a community feel to it. The zoning and planning was very carefully done. It allowed for common grounds. It had several parks. It had large swaths of wooded area with picturesque streams. It had wildflower meadows, two golf courses, nearly 20 public swimming pools, bridle paths, a bike path, four lakes, tennis courts, and extensive foot pathways. The pathways were combined with bridges and tunnels to help separate pedestrians from the vehicle traffic and make it a little bit safer for crossings. It was built on wooded areas of oak, maple, sycamore, and Virginia pine. It was also one of a handful of communities that ended up being designated as a backyard wildlife habitat, because they did this planning to preserve as much natural resources as possible. What I found really interesting about this is- possible. What I found really interesting about this is that they had major goals that they followed. So they set principles, and they had about seven or eight of them. And so I wanted to share those with you. The widest choice of opportunity to be made available for the full use of leisure time. So it had a wide range of cultural and recreational facilities as well as an environment for privacy. I really like this one. The importance and dignity of each individual be a focal point for all planning and take precedence for large-scale concepts, that the people be able to live and work in the same community. Cultural and recreational, I caught myself too. Cultural and recreational facilities be made available to the residents from the outside instead of doing those cultural kinds of things later. And the beauty and structural, that beauty, structural and natural, is a necessity of good life and should be fostered. What I have come to realize, or my perspective, is that this kind of people-centered development, which feels totally different than what I've heard of Chatham Park, is really what the residents of Chatham County would love. They would love this, and I think our whole community would flourish with this kind of development. Thank you.
Next speaker is Mike Watkins.
Mike Watkins, 400 Prince Creek. Number one concern I have about this PDD is that it was crafted entirely by the developer and without conversation with the residents of the Pittsburgh ETJ, literally on top of whom, without the right of vote, this PDD has been dumped. Chatham Park investors will have had many conversations over the years with politicians and economic development folk, all of whom have agendas or quotas for growth and from whom they would get no argument. However, they have talked at local residents rather than with them, told them what will happen, not asked for their input. Had they had a real dialogue, they would have learned more about the true character of this community, something they have, I believe sadly is red, and also discovered a community open to both growth and progress, just not at any price. This board has laid itself open to the same criticism. You've held now four hearings. You've allowed people to have their say, but events show you haven't heard them. You've even reneged on an earlier promise to involve citizens in a planning subcommittee. From the outset, a lack of a process for genuine discussion has been the key problem. I honestly doubt that this process, had this process been in place, you would be facing your second lawsuit today. Luckily, such a process does exist and is close by. The Development Agreement District Ordinance from Chapel Hill has been used very successfully in the Obie Creek planning process and could be an excellent model for Pittsburgh to adopt with Chatham Park. It is not too late. The consultants currently under contract for UDO development are apparently very familiar with it, at the very least discuss it with them. My second major concern is the notion that the small area plan is a panacea for deficiencies in the PDD or the master plan. Several times, I've heard it referred to on this board as if some kind of safety net. Deferring major PDD-wide decisions like contiguous conservation areas and buffers, traffic and socio-economic impacts to the small area plan is oxymoronic, as is, incidentally, the EDC's recent promotion of an economic impact study where the only data source was CPI themselves. The point of the PDD is to set the ground rules
Thirty seconds.
for all development as part of an overarching master planned community. Its key benefit is the ability to identify and address potential cumulative impacts of that overarching plan before they become insuperable barriers to a successful build-out down at the small area plan level. As things stand, there are no rules that aren't both, A, set by the developers themselves, and B, so vague as to be unenforceable. You may as well authorize 27 separate subdivisions from 27 different developers with unprecedented flexibility to do what they want, where they want, without any oversight from the town.
Time has expired. Please
In effect, this small area plan fallback approach renders any PDD pointless. To conclude, amazingly, I believe you're also perhaps the luckiest board in office. You don't get just one chance to do the right thing. You get four.
Next speaker is Philip Culpepper. Next speaker Elaine Chiuso.
Good evening. I'm Elaine Chiuso, speaking as the Hall River Keeper for the Hall River Assembly in Bynum. The Plan Development District Ordinance states in Article 5 that developments approved under the ordinance provide innovative land planning by, I quote, "promoting quality of urban design and environmentally sensitive development by allowing development to take advantage of special site characteristics, locations, and land uses." Nowhere in the requirements listed in the PDD ordinance is language that would have the teeth necessary to ensure that environmentally sensitive is anything other than lip service. No specific information is required from the developer for stormwater plans, wastewater, drinking water, nor requirement for conservation lands. The town of Pittsburgh has had ample input, as you've already heard, from Triangle Land Conservancy, Lawrence Consulting Group, from the Hall River Assembly, many others who provided specific ideas and improvements for this ordinance and master plan, and essentially everything has been ignored. But there was input from one agency, U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, who reminded Pittsburgh in their comments on May 22, 2014, that you have an obligation to protect the Hall River as habitat for endangered species under terms of the Environmental Impact Statement approved for the permit for Pittsburgh's sewage effluent outfall on the Hall. I have attached with my comments for you the letter again from U.S. Fish and Wildlife. This commitment from Pittsburgh included a much larger river and stream buffers that became part of the approved master plan during the rezoning. It also requires any developer along the stretch of the Hall to include stormwater controls designed to replicate and maintain the hydrographic condition of the site prior to the change by developers. How will this be achieved by Chatham Park investors? The massive amount of tree clearing and bulldozing in order to build the urban density and impervious surface would require stormwater planning that by necessity should be done at the beginning of this approval process. One more time, we urge environmental impact analysis to the entire piece of land owned by Chatham Park in order to protect and preserve the streams in sensitive areas. What do these larger required stream buffers now look like when mapped? Why has Pittsburgh not adopted Chatham County's requirements for buffers on headwater streams and wetlands? What will a zero hydrograph stormwater protection system look like for these land drainings to the Hall River? How can Pittsburgh allow the building of Chatham Park to proceed without knowing these answers? This PDD ordinance is a developer's dream, but a nightmare for those of us who live here and depend on and appreciate the Hall River and Jordan Lake. The PDD ordinance is not in the public interest and should be revised to include requirements that would give teeth, not just lip service, to true protection of our waters, our land, and wildlife. Thank you.
That's the end of the list of speakers that I have, was handed by the clerk. Is anybody who did not get a chance to sign that wishes to speak? Don't leave anybody out. Okay. Then that concludes the public hearing. I'll entertain a motion to go out of public hearing.
Before we do that, I would like to request if Ms. Robertson would be willing to provide her written document or her written comments to us.
I've provided the
Great. Thank you. Then we go out of public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
I have.
opposed? None? We're out of public hearing. Our next order of business is whole business number one, Unified Development Ordinance update. Clarion has just given a presentation.
Okay. Okay.
As soon as you're ready.
Well, I'm always ready to talk. Good evening, board commissioners. Pleased to be with you here tonight. There are two of us from Clarion with you. I'm Roger Walton with Clarion, and my colleague Stephen Zeigman. We've had privilege of being in front of you before on several matters, and tonight we are talking about the Unified Development Ordinance project, and we are very pleased to be working on that with you. And I think our, let's see. There we go. What we have done so far, and the next slide will show us some of the components of the work we're going to be doing. So it's been an issue, I know, for some time that you have a number of different ordinances in different places, and that some of them haven't been updated in a while, and that this is an opportunity to bring your standards, your processes, your regulations up to speed and be applying some best practices in the writing of those ordinances. We're going to be, I'm going to give you the project overview, and then we're going to be talking about two things tonight. One is the, as part of our code assessment work that we've done. One is a diagnosis, talking about some things, issues that have come up, and what are some of our ideas are about how you might address those issues. And then the second piece of the document we put together is what we call an annotated outline, which is how, a framework, how we would structure the material as we go forward. So we've done our project initiation, and we have now just completed the code assessment, and that's what we're presenting tonight. After tonight, and after we receive your comments and any others we talked about in the planning board last week, we will begin doing some writing. So tonight is our opinion, our assessment of what the situation is, and I hope that you find it interesting. And one of the things we're hoping for from you tonight is some feedback about are we on target with this? Have we hit the right issues? Is there anything that we're missing? But then the real good stuff comes when we start writing the ordinance. And we're going to do it in two modules. The first module will be looking at administration sections, looking at the zoning district regulations and uses. And then a second module will focus on what you, you asked us to look at a form-based district for your downtown area, and I'll talk about that tonight a little bit, and some development standards. And so we'll wrap all that up, and then have a draft UDO to bring to you and to take up to the public for public hearing. So the reason we're doing it in two modules is a very, it's a lot of material. So that's why we break it up this way. We've done this in other communities and found that it works very well. So we, the process, we initially did a briefing for you. We came to see you and talked to the planning board. If you were helping with staff, put together a technical advisory committee, people who have had their hands on your ordinances and used them, and said this works, this doesn't, here's what our thoughts are, which we will then take into account with our experience about working with ordinances in other places. We had a forum where we presented basically our process and asked people to tell us what they thought were some of the issues that need to be addressed, some of the things that need to be fixed in your ordinances. Last week, we went to the planning board to get the review. Their comments on this code assessment was a very, very good meeting, and we got some great comments from your board members about how to address certain things or what kinds of things are particularly important. And then tonight, we're presenting the code assessment to you and asking you for your comments and guidance, and then we'll start going. So these are the seven issues that have come up out of the reconnaissance we've done on the review of your existing documents, ordinances, plans, policies, and our discussions in the community so far, and our comparison of what you've got today with what we consider the best practices that a lot of communities are using to address development issues. So the seven issues that bubble to the surface that, in our opinion, number one is improve user friendliness. There is a lot of difficulty sometimes for people to use your ordinances. There are rules in different places. Sometimes there's redundancy. Sometimes there's conflicting language. So you're going to improve user friendliness as a theme, improve procedural efficiency. Some of your processes, we're going to be making some suggestions to you. The, just heard, talked earlier this evening about plan development regulations, and you've got a couple of different types of plan development regulations in your ordinance. And one of the things that we would suggest doing is combining those. Downtown character and great gateway is something that comes up over and over again, and is something that can be helped with some good ordinance language that fits your situation. Modernize the zoning districts that you've got and the standards for development in those districts. Add some additional provisions that could help you promote conservation of natural resources. And then the last item, which I think is, there's some room for work here, is doing something with your language and your ordinances that will help, in our opinion, improve development quality overall. So those are the seven issues that have surfaced. I'm just going to go through them one by one. I've got a slide for each one to just talk about a little bit further. Improve user friendliness. I mentioned you've got a full array of ordinances that got zoning, subdivision, flood damage prevention, riparian buffer protection ordinance, stormwater management ordinance, lighting, utility specification. So you've got all of those different ordinances, different places. The whole point of the UDO is to unify and bring them into one place and to enhance the organization so that there are provisions that relate to each other, so they're all in one place. You don't have to go over here and over here and over here to find out what you're looking for. The articles that we are, for the new framework that I've mentioned, and I'll get to this again later, we have a, this is the kind of outline that we've seen work pretty well in other communities with UDOs, where you've got some general provisions up front. Then you talk about the zoning districts, and then you talk about the use standards within those districts. Then you talk about environmental open space standards, site development standards. Then start dealing with some of the more complex issues and non-conformities, how to deal with that. Have your administration and review authority rules near the end, have procedures near the end, have some information about enforcement. And then this number 10 is actually more important than it might look. The interpretation and definitions. We will be suggesting some language that'd be in the ordinance about how this language, how these rules would best be interpreted, and collect all your definitions in one place. One of the things that you've got that I think is, I've seen in other places, that is difficult and awkward is that you might have a definition of something that's embedded in the regulation. So you might have, you might be talking about what users are permitted, and then you define the user, something like that. So pulling all the definitions into one place is something that would really be helpful, in my opinion. Improving user friendliness, adding graphics, very, very important to help people understand and help you communicate what you want, illustrations, photographs. There are some great examples that we can show of communities that have done that well. And define and update the definitions from all in one place, separate them from the regulations. So I think that there's a lot of, actually what I would call low-hanging fruit on the point of improving user friendliness. A lot of things you can do that don't necessarily change any of the substance, but really makes your array of regulations more user-friendly for development community, for citizens, for your staff, for you, for your boards. So that's, that'll be a big one. Next issue.
If I could jump in. The previous slide talked about enhance organization. And what I read you presented, you know, sounded fantastic. My one concern, and the reason is it talked about the who, the when, the how. And it's nice to have a roadmap so that everybody has an idea of how this is going to work. And one of the things you mentioned in there is segregating code from process by virtue of a manual.
Yes.
Yet the manual
And again, this relates partly to user friendliness in that you've got a lot of technical information in your manuals, a lot of engineering standards, for example, that really don't need to be in the main body of the UDO, that need to be referred to and incorporated by reference. And so, and we need to be sure that those links are in place the way you described it, nothing gets lost. But the, it's a, it would be, it's a good idea, I think, to separate a lot of the engineering standards, you have a separate manual and then just refer to it in ordinance, but you're right, be sure that we don't lose the connection.
Right, yeah. No, I agree, the manuals are a key component, absolutely.
Okay. Then the next issue, so we're, I'm still on user friendliness, this is just an example of some of the things that we will be doing when we bring this back to you about document formatting referencing, so that there's good referencing back and forth in different parts of the ordinance, hyperlinked cross-references so that it's very usable online or in digital format, make language clear and precise, and be clear with the, I mean, this might seem like a really silly thing, why is he even talking about it, but being clear with the footers and headers about where you are in the ordinance, what you're talking about, what issues are being addressed on this page with cross-references. So that's something that we want to do. Next issue is on user friendliness. The, there we go with the supplemental manuals and have the, have those done separately, HUD-related and reference to it. And then the, establish very, the order of review procedures. And so let's go on to the next slide. On review procedures, one of the things we're going to recommend, I mean, we're not ready to bring your recommendation yet tonight, but just want to flag for you that we are going to be bringing you some recommendations about streamlining some of your procedures and making some of your things approvable by somebody else other than you and delegate some of that. When I was, just a quick anecdote, when I was with you a year, a couple of years ago when I was helping, while you were missing the planning director and I was getting to know your ordinances, it was, I was shocked to find, for example, that a final plat had to come to you for approval. And that's, for almost every other community I know, that's the kind of thing that's a staff approval. If everything has been approved by the boards and the policymakers and the details on a final plat, I would be just check, check, check the box. And so that's just a small example, but I think that you can, there's going to be a lot of possibility for delegating some decision-making, which I think would make the whole world better for you, so we'll be bringing that to you. Okay. The, having specific procedures set out with what the standards are, doing things like requiring neighborhood meetings, defining the, being very clear about the application of acceptance procedures, those are all things that we're going to have in the ordinance but also have supplementary documents. So there might be a check sheet for applications, for example. Okay. Let's move on to, we've already talked about the review procedures, add some staff review procedures, suggest consolidating some things together. And now this is an interesting one to be, and we're going to be putting some ideas on the table for you to consider about allowing some flexibility in certain kinds of standards. So the, there might be, one of the things that I like to think about, and I don't remember if we have a slide about this or not, things like contextual standards where you've got a standard setback, for example, for a house. There's vacant lot in the neighborhood where all of the houses are setback 10 or 12 feet and the ordinance says it has to be setback 25 feet, that probably doesn't make sense. You might want to allow some flexibility in that case to make something fit with its context. So we'll be suggesting those, we get some ranges of flexibility.
I like that idea, a lot. And one that I'm familiar with that I think is pretty successful was not just a reduction in percentage, but an averaging over any particular area so that you achieved the total but that you allocated differently along different sections of a buffer, let's say.
Some communities do that very well.
Yeah.
And again, the idea is to allow a little bit of flexibility, not a lot, but being clear what the range of flexibility is and who is permitted exercise that authority for flexibility and what are the ranges for the level. Okay. Let's move on to, this is, got some suggestions on the code enforcement process, which we will be suggesting to you, I don't think we need to talk about that tonight. The plan development regulations, you've currently got the plan development district and the mixed use plan development and we will be suggesting combining those and we'll be very interested in any changes you make between now and the time we bring this to you so that we can reflect what you, your best thought about how to do that. Downtown and gateways, keep coming up, every time I talk to somebody, you say, what are you concerned about, what are the issues, what can we do to help keep the character of our downtown and grow it? And you've got that recent study that you did about downtown, that's really got some great ideas. One of the things that you asked us to look at was something called a form-based district. And I'm not sure how widely known that is, but the, it's a technique that a lot of communities are using in certain parts of a community where it doesn't much matter so much what the use is as what the form is, what the building height is, and being very, very prescriptive about it. Your downtown is a great example where a form-based district might work really well to establish the form that new developments take that reflects very much the character of what you've got now. And so that's something that you've asked us to look at and we will. Another, geography that's come up is your gateways, the entrances to town, and what can be done in the UDO to help promote some really quality entrance ways right in those gateway locations. So we'll be bringing some suggestions about that.
Roger, question.
Yeah.
Also, in this document, you make reference to the idea of using NC DOT complete streets.
Yes.
Do you see that as some form of form-based zoning?
It can certainly be folded into form-based, absolutely. And there are some great ideas in that, complete streets, and again, I think that for downtown, the, you've already got complete streets already, but you can do, be doing some more things. I think that the, where that, those kinds of standards might really be helpful is on your entrance ways and some of your gateway boards.
You know, I think of our downtown and I think of it as quite an eclectic collection.
It is.
It is. And I wonder, can you codify that result?
Yes.
Okay.
And we've got, we've got, working with us, one of the premier form-based district drafters really in the country that is going to be helping us, going to bring Pittsburgh and ask you what ideas.
Does that take the architect out of the equation?
It can, or it certainly, well, I'd put it, I'd take it back, it makes architects' value easier.
I mean, what we're talking about for Pittsburgh is something that's very form-based code logic. That is, it's at a fairly basic level for several reasons. I mean, it takes a lot, it can take a fair amount of staffing to actually apply that, so you want to keep it relatively simple that way. But if we're looking at largely the relationship of buildings to the street, that's going to get the relationship of these streets. But, and amassing, as for how many windows, what windows designs, how colored the saws, that's not what we're considering.
I think it's a very hard thing to do.
It is, and you can't do it community-wide, but for a place like your downtown, I think it's worth, it's worth a look to see a little bit. And then we'll be also looking at the rest of your zoning districts and the standards in there and overall these, but you've got some things that you can consolidate and put together and we'll have a, some suggestions about how to reorganize the zoning. One of the things that you'll have to, will be thinking about as we go forward is if the, is if a zoning district changes what is permitted or how it's designed or if it's, or what it's named, that's one thing. If we're changing, if we're significantly changing what's allowed in different communities and that involves a zoning atlas amendment, which might or might not be needed at the ordinance. The, we want to help you bring your zoning district standards up to speed and a lot of them were written a long time ago. And so we've got a, we've got a good library of what communities are doing and what's being effective about how to organize the standards and the uses and so we will bring that to you and I hope that you will find it to be helpful. Let's see, we've already talked about some of the development forms and here at the bottom is what I was talking about, the contextual based standards where you've got a set of buildings that either would have a consistent height or setback or some other form that doesn't exactly meet the requirements and standards of that zoning district, but you want something that fits, so we'll be building those and a flexibility and a provision to do it now. The, want to look at, we're going to offer you some examples of how the cluster development in your most environmentally sensitive areas and suggest making that cluster development of smaller lots and larger open space the preferred type of development in certain zoning districts and not everywhere, but in some places. The, I mentioned that there are some things that can be done to help promote the conservation of natural areas. Now, this is an example where you've got a number of initiatives going on already and there are some groups that are working very, very hard on things like tree preservation and riparian buffers and I'm hoping that what we will be bringing you will be both a combination of what we know and what we've learned, but also drawing upon the conversations that are going on right now in Pittsburgh about these things and having very clear standards in the ordinance. Tree preservation, low-impact development, one of the things that I think is going to be an interesting decision for you guys to make is on things like low-impact development, greenscape, green space, native landscaping and so on, is how much of this do you want to be encouraging, how much do you want to be incentivizing, how much do you want to be requiring? So if we have some, a good idea, for example, about low-impact development, is that the kind of thing you want to require or just mention that this is something you want to encourage or maybe provide some incentives for it? So those are some of the decisions that I think we'll be bringing to you and making.
Well, one of the things that I've found pretty successful in tree conservation ordinances is many municipalities have designed into that system an enticement or an incentive to preserve existing trees as opposed to planting them, thereby making the requirement of the total tree coverage area relevant or relative to, proportional to the trees you preserve, i.e. if you preserve more trees, you have to have less total coverage. If you take more trees, then you've got to plant more trees to recover.
I think, I think it's a very, very realistic incentive that can be valuable to somebody.
Yeah, I think it has worked well. You made mention of a payment in lieu. Now, that is interesting. Is that an impact fee and what does the town do with those funds?
Well, we'll be bringing you ideas about that.
Okay.
And a payment in lieu of an existing regulation is not an impact fee, but impact fees are something that we'll want to be talking to you about. So we'll be bringing you the array of different ways that the town can be financing some of the things it wants to do. The parking, there's a, I think that there's a lot of, a lot of progress that can be made on parking loading standards, so again, we'll be bringing some examples to you of what's worked in some other communities that we put on the table here for consideration. So I think I'm looking forward to that conversation. There's, been working with your staff and about the expanding your open space recreation standards and being sure that what's written in the ordinance is exactly, or as close as possible, what you want to be achieving with new development. The, on the subject of improving development quality, I mentioned neighborhood compatibility standards, I think that, I think that can be very powerful. Paying attention to edges, looking at things like lighting levels next to single-family areas, considering the possibility of time limits on noise generating activities, pay, giving a little bit more specificity about the location of service areas. So I think that there's a lot that can be talked, to talk about there, we're bringing that to you. And the, for commercial design standards, you've got some, you've got some good stuff now. We've got some things we want to suggest about breaking up long street-facing building facade, for example, and the oriented building entrances towards streets, I think we all have seen, and Winston examples where the, where buildings turn their back on the streets and works against the kind of pedestrian quality as complete streets that we're hoping to achieve. Here, again, incentives and this is an interesting, a green roof, you want to, some communities have done a point-based or menu-based incentives for those kinds of amenities that we think can help, help with resource conservation. So again, we'll be bringing ideas to you and asking you, do you want to require, incentivize, or just encourage? Okay. The, I mentioned now, let's go back, so that's our, that's our diagnosis of what you have compared to what we've heard and where we'd like to be going with writing some language for you to be considering. Then this would be the outline that where we put in all those things. General provisions, the second article would be the zoning districts and district regulations. Number three would be what uses are permitted in which kinds, in which zoning districts. The next one is, let's see, let me see if I can remember off the top of my head what I'm looking for is, ah, enormous open space. The, got a lot of things that will go in there, tree preservation, riparian buffers, floodplain buffers, stormwater management and so on, that's, that'll be a very important chapter. And again, this is what I was talking about before, we've got a lot of these things in different places and we pull them all together. And then the development standards things I was talking about, about site layout and design, screening fences, walls, that all goes in one chapter, which will be really fun to talk about. That one's going to be, I think we're going to devote a night just to development standards, there's going to be a lot to talk about there. Next is, then we get into more of the administrative things, how you deal with non-conformities, lots, use of structures, what your current rules are for dealing with that, and then make some suggestions about how you might consider adjusting that. The administration and review authorities, that's going to be an important chapter to talk about what, and just to give you a heads up, we are going to be suggesting to you that some of the kinds of approvals you have now, I mentioned final plat approval, we're going to suggest you consider moving those to some other approval body, like maybe staff.
Roger, you made mention of the idea of a technical review committee.
Yes.
And have you ever seen one of those that includes building inspections?
Yes, absolutely.
If we go that route, I find they don't. And of course, what happens is approval is granted to a site plan and then the inspector gets on-site and changes things.
I, it'd be better if they're at the table.
I think they ought to be at the table.
Then the last couple of chapters are, these, this would be the table that would show the different review procedures, what the procedure are, whether it's special use permit or site plan review or building permit, whatever, and who is responsible for it and what, if there are multiple steps to the process, the planning board and then coming to board commissioners, how that would work. Couple of ideas we'll bring for you on enforcement and then the last chapter will be tying together your definitions and making suggestions about interpretation and this last, this, next to the last one, this is the one I was talking about before, allowing some exercise of common sense, totally, within bounds and with certainly specified, very clear criteria about how some exceptions to the dimensional rules, for example, might be considered in certain circumstances under when and how and what range of exception. So, next steps is to start beginning the drafting of the UDO and we'll do the first module, as I mentioned, will be, first half is administration procedures, the zoning districts, what uses go in them, and then the second module we'll bring to you will be about the, we'll bring you the ideas about form-based district for downtown, maybe some exceptions to the state, the dimensional rules, for example, might be considered in certain circumstances under when and how and what range of exception. So, next steps is to start beginning the drafting of the, of the UDO and we'll do first module, as I mentioned, will be, first half is administration procedures, the zoning districts, what uses go in them. And then the second module we'll bring to you will be about the, we'll bring you the ideas about four based district for downtown, maybe a remaining half of the gateway, it's probably just downtown, but the environmental open space and then the big one, I think, is development standards and definitions. So, that's what we will do and appreciate any comments or suggestions or guidance you have to offer about things you've already given us some, but anything else you'd like to tell us as we, as we go forward. Again, we're, nothing is determined yet or set in stone, but these are, we want to let you, use this as a brief, to let you know where we're headed.
What's the timeframe for these two next steps?
I think that's indicated in your, your slide three on the second page of your handout. But it's, again, we're trying sometime this, early this fall, probably late August versus September, coming out with the first module. And the latter one, I think winter, that probably be January of 2016 and then the, totally they're, that's, maybe we'll put them all together, put the two modules together, clean them up, do some final revision, incorporate all the suggestions that were made in response to those and then the spring of, probably of March of next year.
And Roger, you're thinking, I forget which item it was, but it'd take the entire evening to discuss it.
It may, but for example, no.
So, if we, so, how, because, you know, heretofore, I've been hungry for information and I wanna make sure that everybody has the opportunity to hear what is said, comment on what is proposed and that you guys have the time to reflect on that and respond to it.
Yep, and the, as I was going through that, a couple of times I was saying we're gonna bring you choices and, for example, development standard is a great one. So, if there's, if there's something that you want to achieve with new development, do you want to require it or do you want to encourage it or bring some incentives? So, the, my vision on this is that as we go through it, we wouldn't be bringing all of that stuff to you, but that, working with your, working with your staff and what we've heard, I think that there are gonna be a couple of key issues that where we would like your reaction, feedback before we continue on. So, I would, I could easily see trying to come back to you a couple of times with, okay, we've written this and now here, here are, on this issue, here are three ways we can go on this and give us some more guidance to make there.
Again, the way we normally operate is any of this assessment that you begin is our recommendation of direction and what approaches to take, you know, specific issues that we felt have come to the, to the top. And if you feel these are wrong, go in the wrong direction, we need to know that now. We don't wanna go down dead ends, tricks and that. Or if we need to adjust them, fine. Now, there'll always be some adjustments, I think, that we've, but the big ones, you know, which way to take, that's what we want to get, get right off. Very detailed things, we're gonna be, there'll be alternatives, this one or that one, you know. I have to go through these things and we'll suggest, we'll recommend one and then we'll note that this could be something different, but it's not obvious. So, again, at a macro level, it would likely, you get that input now, I shall, but is there anything in the other really, as far as you're concerned, that's off, should be off, the radar, is it too far, not far enough, that we need to go or just the wrong way to go? And so, we'll, we'll alter that or we'll eliminate that or add something if something else needs to be added.
Okay. I've got quite a number of comments and I don't know that it's fruitful to spend the next couple of hours doing this, quite frankly.
Yeah, I mean, our, our interest is getting the-
At least not on a Monday night.
Yeah, but our interests are two of all. One is getting comments from any and everybody, audience or yourselves, as to what's in the, the assessment plan.
Yeah.
That can be tonight, that can be by written comments, that, whatever, from the board. It'd be nice to get, again, some consensus as to, is this the right direction or not? If you have details, that's correct. If you have questions, I think tonight can be a better time.
Well, I think in general, you're proposing a vast improvement and the organization, you know, like the flexibity, flexibility ideas. So, I think you're presenting a more professional ordinance and in that I, I like a lot of what I have, I see here. So, I think we're headed in a good direction.
That's great and I'd love to see your, I'd love to get your comments.
Okay. And one of the things that would be helpful to me is some of the charts, which I think were probably important to understand or would have been helpful, were just too small for, for my eyes to read on this. And I went looking for it online on our website and I did not, I did not find it and that's not to say it's not there.
On our website or?
Yeah, on our website. And what I'd like for, I would like for this thing to be on the website so that the general public has all the ability to review and comment and I don't know what the best forum is to get that, their comments to you for consideration.
As we, I think at the beginning of this project, there is actually a project website.
Okay.
It's for a UDO dot com.
I am signed up.
Okay. And so, this is on, on that side.
Okay.
There is an opportunity to, again, submit comments on this and certainly an opportunity to review this. Actually, tables, that's, that's always the issue. It'll be some of the, the bigger tables, the ones that show like process that I wanna think is probably readable, some of the examples that are in there are tables that we use in our codes, which is more mainly intended to just show formatting issues or streamlined possibilities.
Not necessarily content.
They may not be, I didn't wanna take up too much room of those, but in the code itself, they might be full page, but here, they're just little figures or excerpts.
So, maybe the thing to do is just to have a link on our website to your website because I think naturally people are gonna think Pittsburgh, rewriting ordinances, I'm going to Pittsburgh.
Yeah.
I think we are.
We do? Okay, well, my apologies then. I, I-
We'll go make sure there, there should be one, yes.
In the right-hand corner.
Okay. Okay. That's good. I, like I said, I did not find it and I didn't mean to say that that was proof that it wasn't there.
It's a prominent project and maybe it should have been displayed.
Well, I, yeah, I was-
We'll, we'll post a, a copy of the handout too for those who want a very quick, quick version.
And through your website, folks can make comments?
Yes.
Okay. Fantastic.
I'm very, I'm very excited by the things you're showing us, especially about the conservation ideas that you have and about some design standards, I think that's very exciting. I'd also like to make sure that we, you know, we talked about adding parks to ordinance too and I'd like to see something like that if that's, I think as far as reflecting what this community is, that's one area that I think is very, very much a part of this community is we have a lot of artists here and I feel like not only is it our character, but also economically it's been such a, such a strong influence on the community. I just wanna make sure that we look at that and also for me, store preservation of some of our neighborhoods, all things related to maintaining the character of, or not just the downtown, but some of the historic neighborhoods.
So, I guess, I got, my question would be, have we got you at a milestone now where you're stopped pending feedback from the board? You really need to get that before you could make reasonable progress?
Before we make good headroads, I've actually started drafting parts of this, some of the simple parts are not likely.
Okay. And what I've heard from Commissioner Fieldgo is he's got a lot of comments and I'm wondering, is it, is it something that we wanna do in writing for to then via the manager or do we wanna have a work session to, to get down and do this study, consult work? What's the sense of the board? I mean, I, I feel like I, I need to read through it one more time.
I feel like I wanna study it from now too.
Yeah, and I don't know, we should give ourselves a reasonable deadline, a couple of weeks or something to do that. So, it's not slow down the contractor, but what's the sense of the board? You just wanna take a couple of weeks to synthesize your remarks and write it down again to Mr. Respecs and the board and to the consultants.
Into all of us too, pretty much.
Yeah, I guess we should cheer with each other, yeah.
I wouldn't mind your question.
Give the development feedback.
Yes, and I think, yes, true, the public should be a part of, not, you know, even between us, they should have access to, they're going to be talking about as well, so that's a good idea to have a work session that goes to, to the public.
We wanna try and slot that on the calendar now or does a lot of Mr. Respec's work on that?
If you don't mind, let's do that right now.
Okay. So, do you want, what's this, what's the sense of the board? Do you wanna do this on an off Monday night or do you wanna do it on a weekday?
I would love to do it on an off Monday night.
Just have a work session dedicated solely to a couple hours of-
I think it'd be fantastic.
Yeah.
Okay.
May 4th and then May 18th.
I think the 18th would be better, give us more time to process, give general public ability to study as well.
I'm sorry about that, I kept, I'm talking before I was comparing you. I, I'd like to keep June open, as far as work sessions are concerned, I'd like to keep June open for special meetings, but you know, a lot of the, so, yeah, May 14th through 18th could be great.
There's the 11th, 18th, that's good.
Yeah. Do that during the day?
I can do the 18th.
We're gonna, we're gonna do this during the day or in the evening?
Evening.
Evening.
Schedules. We can start, we can start at six instead of seven, can we do that?
Yeah.
Roger, from the consultant's point of view, the 18th, for me personally, I won't be here, but I'll check with Craig Richardson, who's our, who's our lizard at code writing and, and Stephen will try and cover, cover, I'm sure.
Was there a particular role that you wanted us to play in that or just be available questioning?
Well, this is the receipt of feedback, you, you're kind of the target.
Yeah.
We'll be looking it at, yeah.
I'm sure there'll be questions.
Yeah.
I'm sure there'll be questions.
Is it, is a, well, we said, is there a, kinda what, I think it'd be good to have Roger there, but is there anything exciting for us about Monday? Could it be another night that week? What, is there another night that week that you could join us?
The, I think that, see, Wednesday night, I'm supposed to take recycling now. I, every, that's the only clue I have for another night that week.
Well, how do y'all feel about doing that on, not on Mondays?
I could do Thursday, 21st.
Yep. 21st, yeah, 21st at 6 o'clock. We do something by 9 o'clock. It would be here, yeah.
I'll definitely put those on the project works.
Should we just open at the restaurant?
Okay.
So, are we still playing?
21st, 6 p.m. and that'll give us all time to reread this, we'll leave this document, synthesize our comments and have a specific work session.
Thank you very much.
Roger, I have one question on your advisory committee. Did you have helpful input from our advisory committee and did everyone show up?
We did have helpful input and the, again, the, it's a, it was a technical committee. So, the, what we took a look at was users of the, of your current ordinances and that was very helpful. As people who have used your ordinances to prepare applications or review applications or get, look for guidance, so that's very helpful.
They have the majority of the members and they're very vocal, so it's very helpful.
That was the advisory committee that we had at the first meeting, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Very helpful, thank you. Okay, we'll foresee again.
Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to our adjusted agenda here. We've pulled up, wait, I'm pulling this in agenda as the whole list number one, which is budget numbers. Nancy, could you pull the front period and respond to Commissioner Fieldgo's questions?
Nancy, the questions I have have to do with the idea that we're transferring these, these funds that have been collected and I'm wondering what kind of fees are constitute development fees. What I'm concerned about is that we are spending money on consultants for plan reviews and that kind of thing and not getting reimbursement on that or, because I know you identified that as something, something I've been concerned about for many, many years and just didn't know if this was related to that. Okay.
Yeah, it is indeed, Commissioner. I completed an analysis to see what we were actually, had received in fees versus what we've been paying out in fees and in particular for site plan reviews and for construction, construction inspections. And that's the, that's the reflection of wanting to move money that we've received in capital improvements that have been developer fees for these types of things where we can actually pay for those, pay for them. We are currently over budget in our professional services due to those site plan, slight plans fees and the construction site inspection fees.
So, we're having transfer funds to cover those costs instead of getting reimbursement from the development community?
Well, we, we have, we have received those fees. I'm also going to try to get some of those funds we recouped from the, from the developers as well, but they were, the monies were put into the capital reserve fund and so we need to take them out of there in order to pay for the services.
Okay. So, okay. So, we're actually using those, those funds to reimburse the appropriate fund?
Right, right now, there's only one developer and I can't remember off the top of my head that we need to collect about 18,000 to 20,000 dollars in additional fees. The other developers are still bringing down their balance from what they've paid in, in their fees. So, there's still, there's only one, but we basically need to move the money from one pot to another pot so we can pay it. If that makes sense.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Are we finding that our fees are covering our expenses? Or do we still have a shortfall?
We would still, if we looked at it in the sense of covering our expenses as far as our staff, our overhead, then no, we're not-
And our private consultants that we-
Right, then no, we're not covering, but, but at least we're trying to recoup some and, and this will help us by doing so.
Okay, well, I think one of our goals for budget is to see if we can get closer.
Right, and we did not budget a lot of, this year for hydrostructure was not included in, a lot of their work was not included in the 2014, 15 budget and that's a huge part of what we're trying to take care of this evening with this budget amendment.
And I think some of that too is best practices that kind of went awry in terms of how those projects were built and accessibility of the contractors and so forth. I think that makes a pretty good start slightly.
Well, I think having the discussion is an important step in understanding that we've gotta manage this.
And we, we're putting in some stopgap measures, so going forward, I don't think we'll see as bad a relief, so to speak.
Okay, great, thank you.
And the other thing I wanted to bring to your attention was that when I put this budget amendment before you, I was including in section three, the original said 200,000, 675,000 dollars and it should be only 185,000, 675 dollars. I have, had included the full amount for Wooten, but we identified that we were going to use 15,000 dollars worth of, of the Chinatown Park investment to offset that, so, and I didn't reflect that, so I wanted to make sure you had the right numbers when you-
Yeah, I think we, we had that correction up here, yeah.
Nancy, one last comment, is we're working through this- Nancy, one last comment. As we're working through this in the budget process and reexamining what we're charging for these fees, I'd like to, to use the concept of the fully burden label rate. We saw that from this league management business. What I mean by that is, you know, when we use hydrostructures, they're charging us a hundred dollars, a hundred and twenty dollars an hour for a person to come over here and, you know, do a sewer pipe inspection. Clearly, that's not what the engineer gets paid. It's, you know, it's, it's the company's cost of owning an engineer and an office and a car and all that stuff, and so if we send Fred out, we shouldn't be charging just what Fred's hourly pay rate is. It should be at a fully burden label rate that reflects the whole cost of having a town engineer and his car and his desk and his computer and all of it, so we shouldn't be giving that service away for parking basement prices. If you know what I mean.
I follow you, and we'll certainly do our best.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Okay. So if there are a number of questions, we have this action that we did not take under the consent agenda to adopt this budget ordinance as revised. I hear a motion to adopt the ordinance.
Seven seconds.
All fair?
I have.
Opposed? I oppose this, the ordinance is down. Number two, or formerly number one, now number two under a new business, fund balance and fund balance reserve policy.
Uh, I think I'll have Nancy explain this one as well. I think if I could know, you know, again, as I indicated in my memo, the budget is going to become more complicated. However, that said, even if we went into a caretaker role for budget, kind of flatline, you know, went into an early 2000s, I should say mid-2000s model, we still need to identify a lot of the terminology that we see within the attached materials, and we still need to do things like identify fund balance level. It's, it's nothing that, you know, it's nothing that is, that is certainly handcuffing us. It's, as, as a lot of policies, they are, they are recommendations. But I think it's a very useful tool from a staff perspective, but also to add consistency to the budgeting process, particularly in terms of even the management of long-term finances over the long haul. I guess setting the table with that, turn it over to the person who really knows what she's talking about.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. So what you have before you is a draft policy regarding fund balance and reserve policy. And, and this, as the Senator said, it really does have, provides to have a best practice in place. With our budget process, we have to be mindful of where we, how we spend our funds, and whether they're restricted, whether they're unrestricted, and so this is something that will help us guide, guide us as we are working towards the 15, 16 budget. In addition, helping us to identify specific projects that we might want to use for capital improvements and capital reserves. And so this is just the step in the right direction, and basically provides us to have a guideline and some best practices that we can use to be physically managing our, our, our monies. And I entertain any questions that you might have.
Any questions from the board? I have a comment. First of all, I just, I want to thank the manager and Nancy for getting this done. It's something that has been long overdue. I think this is pretty common for municipal businesses to have such a policy. You have a little concern about the target that you set for fund balancing, ten percent. That seems, that seems very well to be, like we're forward to discuss that a little bit. We're required by law to have eight percent. And there, there was a time in everybody's recent memory where our fund balances were over a hundred percent. A lot of people were, it was excessive. Indicate that maybe your taxes are too high or something, but, but only two percent over the statutory minimum seems to be to be a very low number that puts us at risk for, you know, the unforeseen, like the loss of a major revenue like Townsend's was, was two hundred and thirty thousand dollars of revenue lost in an instant, you know, from one phone call. So I don't know. I would entertain, I think we ought to do this as a statement of a goal and a threshold. A goal being, you know, a level we'd like to attain, and the threshold being the absolute minimum that we'll accept, instead of just stating ten percent.
My, my thought process was to at least have a bottom, you know, knowing that hopefully we would want it to be more than ten percent. We currently are more than ten percent. I can't remember when I did my number crunching where we were, but it's a healthy number that we are currently. But if this was just as, that we wouldn't have to keep on coming back and modifying the policy. If we put a minimum threshold in, we can always, always be more than that. So that was my mindset. But I'm certainly not opposed if we wanted to raise that bar. That's certainly a spy. But that was what I, my thought was that we wouldn't have to keep on revisiting a policy, but if we had to, if we put a minimum in.
I think that was my thinking too, was what's the recourse if you find yourself in difficult times? You change the policy if you set the bar too high. And so the fewer times you modify the policy, I agree with that approach. Because I want to have as, as much flexibility as, as we can and exercise, you know, good judgment. Let that be the, the goal.
I think it's kind of the thing to keep in mind too, and this is, you know, not aside the school of government, but I mean, I think you started talking about this first, and just spending a bit of time up there in the county municipal class. The, you got to keep in mind, well, the school government will always tell you it depends, and that's kind of a joke. I mean, if you ask them a question, they'll say, well, it depends, and then they'll go into a war. And in this case, it does. It does kind of depend. I mean, each, each town's finances are going to be a little bit different in terms of percentage fund balance that would be used. Keep in mind, fund balance is typically something that stipulates if you did receive any other revenues, how long can you continue to operate? And so, so setting, setting that number kind of depends on, on really the health of, of your system and how much you have in terms of expenses. So ten percent, yeah, it's a floor for sure, but that, our needs could vary from year to year, and I think that's why.
If I remember, I think there were almost like two, we had, we could still work for almost two years without having to worry about running out of money, so it was a pretty healthy number from what I'm just trying to recall.
So it's, yeah, it definitely, I mean, if you, you know, fifteen percent, typically there's probably a little bit more science. It could go into a number like the one we're struggling with right this very second. But if, if a number like fifteen percent feels a lot more healthy to, and I think we're even on that.
I know we are. I just can't remember. I want to see if we're like almost forty percent.
Yeah.
It's a healthy number. I just can't remember.
I guess from thirty-five to forty percent down there. There was a time we were a hundred and five percent, which is probably too much. But a ten percent fund balance, you know, if something untoward were to happen, and it's happened here. It was at both funds. We had a, we had a bill from NC DMT once that was seven years old that they just forgot to send us. We may have forgotten with that, this, that was over a hundred thousand dollars. Ten percent fund balance is, it was roughly two hundred and, two hundred and twenty, two hundred and forty thousand dollars or something like that. I'd be much more comfortable with, I'd, I'd say twenty, but I'd be comfortable with fifteen. Because it's, it's supposed to be your safety net. And ten percent, that, that's about, that's about forty-five days of operating expenses. I don't know if that's much of a safety net.
You know, and I think how we would, boots-on-the-ground stuff, I think how we would be applying these policies would be during, primarily during the budgeting process, if we started looking at revenues and expenditures and the bottom line. You know, at the end of analysis, what, what would our end fund balance be as a result of, you know, going with particular end analysis budget? And if we, you know, if we crept near that, that fifteen percent or ten percent or whatever, then that's where we say policy. And that's where we kind of kick in, which wouldn't necessarily restrict you from doing any one thing, but it just kind of sends that red flag. We call policy, so.
Well, I guess I also have some concerns about having other folks use this as a hammer. It's like we cut our own switch and now we can beat, beat the law in here. Somebody could come to a provocating of the budget and say, well, you got taxes by fifteen cents because you, you know, your fund balance is at thirty-five percent. You say your past year is only supposed to be ten, right? I don't want to have that in our respect. I just think that it would be very low. It should be higher.
I feel comfortable with a little higher off than. At least western may or projected fifteen, and I could still back with that.
I agree. Fifteen is good. Good start.
Fifteen percent works just as well as, as your pleasure. We can certainly make it fifteen percent.
Well, I'd like it to be even a lot bigger than that, but fifteen is, we can, I think, really okay with that?
Kind of like you though, Mr. Mayor, more towards twenty. Either way, things are going up, and we have some major emergencies.
Well, I tend to think emergencies on the water sewer side, which, major blowout there.
But no doubt, you, now you do run, you know, I think, I think in some ways you can run the risk of having a fund balance that's too high. Does any have a responsibility to the people that pay the taxes, that use the funds wisely and pay that? You know, if you're taxing higher than what you're actually spending, or you're not spending enough. Those are some red flags, too. It's like, whatever that number is as far as, you know, even a ceiling, certainly we're not going to, we're not going to go there and just, just act it right there too, right now, but, you know, I've, in, you know, in my career, I've probably done around twenty percent virtually every budget that we've had. I think this is the longest we've maintained.
I mean, in my research, I've found in jurisdictions, it's low is the minimum of eight to a high, as high as forty-five percent. So that's just, that's the whole gamut as far as what the jurisdiction is comfortable with.
And that's as a policy?
I was doing some of the research for this and just seeing what other, other counties and municipalities in North Carolina, I could say the low was eight, the high was forty-five.
I would think if you, I'd be willing to bet that if you did a comparison between a matter of percentage of fund balance and population, you'd find that, you know, like ten percent is a lot of money for Charlotte.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. It's true. The small addition, the smaller jurisdictions did have a lower percentage in that, that very same reason, I'm sure.
Yeah, so little towns like us, you, you, you know, ten percent is, is two hundred and forty thousand for Charlotte. It's probably two hundred and forty million. Well, are we in agreement with fifteen? Does our paperwork cover a little bit?
Any other questions?
Would that change do a motion to, to dispass?
Seven seconds.
I oppose. It's enough of it as well, but I think it is.
Thank you.
Okay. Don't go too far away.
No, it's on the here.
Yeah. Next item, ordinance to amend the budget for acceptance of Channel Park payments.
Thanks. As you recall, we approved the agreement with, with Channel Park to receive payments annually. Annual payment in the future of fifty thousand dollars. For this remainder of the fiscal year, I think two payments and seventy-five thousand dollars for total of fifty thousand by the end of this fiscal year. The, in order to, in order to properly maintain the agreement, we're required, you know, not, not only for our own education and best management, but also in terms of the agreement at all, we're required to provide some sort of accounting or explanation for how the funds are collected and expanded. You might recall some of that discussion from previous meetings. Our purpose here tonight is to essentially create a landing space. My apologies. Essentially create a landing space for, for the payments that we receive from Channel Park investors, but also too to, to, to create space within our budget to spend the one hundred and fifty thousand dollars for this year. For future years, we would expect to have our budget help spell out in, in a little bit of detail for how we would go about spending in a similar fashion to what, what you see here tonight. But what, again, what I want to do tonight is essentially create the mechanism in the, in the budget, you know, in the budget, within our current budget to receive the expanded monies. The, basically taking in total the one hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we'd be receiving by the end of this fiscal year, I'm proposing we spend in three very basic areas. First being personnel, second being some expenditures unplanned, and then third being some other, and that other would include a number of, a handful of things, I guess, that I would get into here in just a second. But previous meetings I mentioned where, what direction my, my thought process was on this, and that being with personnel, where we've discussed, I think, quite a bit that our current personnel is, is experiencing quite a bit of workload with Channel Park, and also too the normal duties that they have and are even associated with Channel Park. And so what I would be proposing is do with this money, this can begin the process of hiring essentially three positions. First being an administrative assistant position in the same classification as, as the one that we just hired for, for our front lobby. The second being engineering technician position that would essentially handle a number of the more, more technical and hands-on duties that our town engineer currently is trying to kind of pull double duty out right now. And then the last position would be an additional planner position in the same classification essentially as what we have now. The engineering technician position would be, for all intents and purposes, a new position and classification as far as our current policies are concerned. I believe in the diligence that we put into determining that position. I think we used the Apex file in as far as our cost, our cost classification and our description. The administrative assistant position essentially would be what I would look at securing first. I think we've got a pretty good start with a lot of the resumes that we've received, but I'd also repost it. And we kind of go through and try to evaluate, you know, based on the type of, the type of person that we would want to add to our team to be able to handle a lot of our incoming engineering and planning questions from a customer service standpoint, but also as far as a staff support standpoint. Again, it's a thing that, that we're really, with all of the committees and subcommittees and developer meetings and board meetings that we have, it's been, it's been a times a challenge to keep up, I think. The, the reason for this payment would be to allow us to be able to keep up and allow us to be able to keep up with the costs of the Channel Park development. Plans, that being the number two area, we have, by the end of this fiscal year, we have a few costs that could be coming up that, that I would consider attributable to Channel Park, and we had some discussion. I know that there, you know, there was, I guess, some discussion maybe concerning the UEO and in the agreement did specify that the UEO was, was one of the costs that, that could be assumed as part of the agreement, and that in this budget would be part of what we would be tackling. I think we sort of have all fifty percent of the total cost of, of the UEO for this current fiscal year as far as the bills that we have coming due. Also too, and we talked a little bit about it in the last budget amendment, that being the wastewater treatment kind of- the wastewater treatment type of PER, there was, there was an addition to our existing, or I should say, when we were in the process of negotiating wastewater treatment type of PER, there was some questions, how much detail should we get into as far as the sand production, at least as an internal discussion? And in this case, you know, a lot of this discussion was coming from, was coming from Chad and Park, and we felt like that there would be a benefit to Chad and Park for this. And so that's why we're plugging in fifteen thousand five hundred dollars from our payment for exploring more in the means within the wastewater treatment type of PER, the feasibility of extending sanitary service to, to the Sanford wastewater treatment plant in some way, shape, or form, having our consultant explore that in some more detail. Master facilities planning, a recall from our winter retreat, we talked about trying to determine what the overall impact of Chad and Park will be on staffing. And I think maybe, maybe the discussion at that point in time was from, from a micro level, a bit more of a micro level, but what I would like to do is begin engaging master facilities planning. Some of that's going to have to take place with Chad and Park and be associated with Chad and Park. Some of it may not be totally associated with Chad and Park, but we've identified a cost within this current fiscal year of, of starting that. And I've been researching some, some RFQs, and I would really like to be served on that. And so I'd like to plug in some money to do it. And then finally, as far as plans are concerned, we do have some, some monies coming due for the Chad, excuse me, the Jordan Lake Partnership. You'll recall that the Jordan Lake, Jordan Lake Partnership is, is a collaboration with other water partners in the region. And there are some planning costs that are coming due for this current fiscal year. And so I would propose that we identify a certain portion of this meeting for those purposes, due to the fact that, that our increased need of, of water and our future water use stepping from possible Jordan Lake Partnership intake, the western intake would be attributed to Chad and Park in the fifty thousand, maybe conservative, that's, that's what we have due right now at this fiscal year. Other, in this case, this is, there's a reason why I called it, called it other. I definitely didn't want to call it discretionary or miscellaneous. But if, if we were to add personnel, we would need to, we would need to explore housing them in a, in a larger facility than what they're currently in. Of course, going back to the discussion from probably three years ago, we don't have space in our building, certainly the, the positions that we moved over to forty-one Fayetteville Street. We don't have, we don't have the room here, they won't have the room in forty-one Fayetteville Street beyond the administrative assistant. So we're going to have to start the process of relocating that. If we do not spend, there's, there is a chance, I think, due to timeline of adding position, that we wouldn't spend that twenty-five hundred in that, in that category of rent slash facility. So that is something that could be a portion elsewhere if, if need be. Identify a need for a vehicle, because if we add an additional engineering tech and an additional planner, certainly the engineering tech in and of itself is probably going to require that position due to a lot of the inspections and things like that that would be going on site to have a more intensive use for transportation. And so we'd be seeking to identify the used vehicle probably as some sort to be able to get around. I don't anticipate needing that during this fiscal year. But I think, I left it in there because I think we're going to need to explore that in a larger budget plan that we put together in this category. Computers, probably something that I would be looking to get at right away. We would need three computers with some current setup support. We could probably be purchasing those ahead of time. Some of that, some of that line item would be used to, once we were in a new facility, to, to complete setup. The final category in this, in this other would be professional services. This is one that we, we may need to, we may need to pop up if we don't spend money in some of the other areas. We have, you know, if, if, if the master facilities planning and if some of the other impact planning takes off, there's a chance that we could spend more of that this year. But as of right now, we identified thirty-six thousand two hundred and fifty. We do have a need for specialized plan review until we can get an engineering tech, until we can get an additional planner on board. So we would seek some, we would seek some formal relationships in that regard. But then I would also too, want to bring in support for, for information and communications as we, as we develop and as we have projects that require passing communication and transparency. Having a public information officer is something that we currently cannot afford, but I think with the payments, we can secure some, some services of communication professionals to kind of help ease that burden and, and really serve the public in a, in a better way than than what we have right now as far as communicating board decisions and intentions and so on. So in a nutshell, that's, that's what I'm, that's what I'm dealing with. You also have, you see, have, have an overview of how I'm spending money, but the rubber really hits the road with ordinance to amend the budget. And that's, that's really the document that is approved, the mayor would, would sign. You can see that in the general fund, we have general fund revenue coming in from Chad and Park, and then general fund expenditures would be rolling out as, as indicated, based on, a lot of that based on what we would be contemplating hiring for this fiscal year. And I think that particularly in terms of personnel is the, the highest, most expensive example of what we would be looking at this fiscal year in a lot of those categories. Nancy certainly welcome to add anything on there if I didn't.
Very well, thank you.
If I didn't cover anything, would I have to tap out and ask her any questions from comments or concerns that she would have?
Any questions from the board?
That's a lot of work we went into this, thank you.
Well, yeah, we're not, we're not even done with it, so.
That's the work you've done so far.
Thank you, it's good to hear.
Yeah, I would echo that comment. I, I would not be inclined to nitpick your allegations here. Clearly you give this a long thought. I do have one, a couple of comments though, just for the board in general. This is, this is a big step for us. I don't think we've added a staff position since I was in office here and not in my even last two years. We would be recession, you know, we've been negative, what are we, forty-four, forty-five staff, no, forty-five?
Forty-five.
Forty-five, yeah. So this is a big deal. We should not do it. It's a, as we said in prior, prior meetings, if, as Chad and Park begins to blossom, the staff's going to go from forty-four to probably seven hundred and forty-four before it's all set in a hundred and forty years. But we should have, keep in the back of our minds that this, this three hundred and five thousand dollars we're getting from Chad and Park is only going to foot the bill for the next few years. There's a declining contribution aspect of that agreement that says when our tax revenues reach a certain amount, then they, their contribution declines. And, you know, three hundred thousand dollars could easily be collected from the thousand houses, so. Yeah, so for the bill to thousand, they've got nineteen thousand more billed, we'll be, we'll be paying for this out of the tax base, so we should be cognizant of that as we're agreeing to this. But again, I think reallocating, I think what you're, what you're suggesting is reasonable, with support. Technical budget issue here, I see you're putting all the money in the engineering department and none in planning. Is that correct?
I created a new, a new department, Jeff's School on Chad and Park. So fifty-three hundred is the, is a new department for the town, which is just so that you control all the Chad and Park, so this is to, even though, yes, the, the staff that will be hiring will be, will be helping engineering and planning, but I wanted to be able to account for it separately.
Okay.
And that's why I created a different department for, for the expenses.
Okay, so this, you department will pay the salaries of all these three people?
That's correct.
So, some of these are going to be split costs then, like, you'll figure that out. I wouldn't get any voice, you'll.
No, I would.
I thought, I couldn't remember the number, but I do, that would play a role. Okay, I get it.
Okay, just concern of, of timing where we're, we're allocating funds for very quick hires. And I'm thinking that the work is there to be done, and if we don't have the hires, are we then, as I think you've alluded, Mr. Rusbeck, then going to transfer that to professional services because we're going to need people to do the work? And that could include the, the rent figure rolling into that as well. So we'll just have to keep an eye on it. I hear what you're saying, that you're going to try to get these folks in, but, you know, it's a pretty quick turnaround for hiring. So just so long as we know that that's, that's the approach we're taking, then I'm comfortable with it. I know we've got to get the work done, and quite frankly, I wonder if we could even assign some of this money to work that's in our ears, that we've already had to pay for.
Yeah, I think, I think within professional services, we certainly have the ability to do that, and as you can see, I think we've got, we have the ability to reallocate some of that money to professional services as need be. I think honestly, my, a lot of my intention was, was with personnel and identifying that was to be realistic, at least as far as needing a placeholder for that. And as you can see, I did identify what we would be looking at as far as our, as far as our annual cost would be. My, my ideal would be to get those on board as quickly as possible. But I will freely admit before you this evening, it's going to be a challenge to do that beyond the administrative position.
Right, okay.
Yeah, absolutely. Professional services are something that I think almost immediately, we're going to have to, you know, we're going to have to keep that mechanism into place almost literally tomorrow.
And if you have to go through the process of reallocating that money, is that something that's going to require board approval? Or is that something you're going to be able to do to reallocate?
Yeah, I think the board approval would, would come into play in a couple of different areas. I, I seek board approval in terms of executing agreements. So for instance, if we were at the security services, communications, communications firm, I would come to you for that, but your question was dealing directly with the budget. And I think we have, you know, we have guidelines for what we can do within our expenditures in these line items that you see proposed. And so ideally, we'd be able to spend within that. If we were looking at spending without that, growing, we spend beyond that, then yes, we would have to continue to make some, make some adjustments to reallocate money appropriately.
So we'll be mindful of that going forward, and so we do have a ten percent allowance, where we wouldn't have to come back to the board. We would take either need to move it to another line on outside. If we had to move from personnel, for example, to other services, then we would need your permission to do that. So, so we may have to come back to you and gear with the, with the revision.
We shouldn't not suspect that.
So it's, it's possible.
Okay, okay.
Well, this is like general fund money. If we get to thirty-two units, not spend, it reverts to, I guess it would be.
No, this will not revert to fund balances, this restricted money.
Well.
It attracts from the next year's head.
You're right. Who does it?
Yeah, and that's, I'm very concerned about that. I think the work is there, I think we need to take advantage of it or utilize it, not to give it, utilize it.
I agree. I agree, it's going to be, this doesn't, and that's why I wasn't trying to be facetious when Mr. Foley, you know, complimented me, you know, this work is starting.
Yeah. I think it's now ongoing.
And we can reallocate what we spent, you know, you mentioned about, to, to, in, in our, we, we, I've tried to reallocate that. So that's one way that we can make sure to spend those numbers by reallocating the UEO expenses, that one or the other.
Okay, okay.
Okay. Any other questions?
Make a motion that we adopt the ordinance enlisting the town of Pittsburgh operating budget for two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen as presented this evening.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? You may now oppose the amendments adopted. Brings us to update on capital projects.
Thanks, you have. I have just a few, a few updates this evening. We're going to be looking at staff presenting some slow changes to the page or in part in the next four weeks. You know, Mr. Horn has been working, building on that, has, has somebody that's on, we can move forward with the pocket part of the document. Chad and Park utility plan, there was a, it was a meeting recently with Kim and Creed, the twenty-first of the last week, to discuss some options for an elevated water tank, elevated water tanks. We've received some information from Kim and Creed on that to digest and report back to you, and we're looking to do that with the next meeting from the staff department as well. We've got some stuff to think about. Wastewater plant expansion upgrade, I mentioned it earlier, that we've been working with, with the company. We've got recently with representatives, staff representatives from the city of Sanford, just some of the parameters of extending town Pittsburgh wastewater to south, to the city of Sanford's wastewater treatment plant. So we're working out some of those details as well as the other aspects of the wastewater treatment plant, PR, exploring a lot of the options, the other options that we discussed as wanting to take a closer look at within the PR and what we want to do to handle additional wastewater due to expansion. Downtown visioning, I have your report that we do have, we did have a very good meeting with the Department of Transportation, DOT consultant, Preston Development's staff on what we want to do as far as next steps for downtown visioning. Concurrently, Paul Horn is getting the band back together again, so to speak, on the small town Main Street program. And so I think the two are coming together nicely, and in the next month or so, we're looking at having a meeting with the small town Main Street folks and DOT and have, I think, a check-in on the vision and also have DOT explain firsthand what we're dealing with as far as, as far as process for some of the improvements that we're meeting and identified in the visioning process, which would be centered and focused around the traffic circle. And so again, we're looking to do that within the next month or so. I think if Paul were here, I, I don't know how many of you were, were in attendance, I guess it would be two weeks, almost two weeks ago now, apparently over three or so folks that have, curious about, about the small town Main Street program. So I think it could be a pretty good, pretty good group to, to update on that. You also too, I'll go off the script a little bit, to also too, recall that we, Mr. Pickett over at the water treatment plant had indicated that we were looking at following up on some budget activity, the intake, the Ha River intake over the last year. So we spent a lot of time now for, in terms of upgrading our emergency power generation at the water treatment plant, but we didn't have any backup, energy backup down at the intake site. So power outage is historically caused a little bit of a problem for us in terms of having the ability to power up the intake system. We'd be totally at, at mercy of whatever we had at our water treatment plant if power went down. treatment plant if power went down, down at the water treatment intake down at the Ha River site. And so Adam and Paul have made it tomorrow, they should be getting the switch installed down at the Ha River site. That, once that switches installed, that would give us the ability to bring in an emergency generator and use that to power our intake system. So I think there's some good news there and we'll let you know as, let you know what is in place. That's, that's going very well. And then one other thing that I'll, that I'll mention, and I probably won't go into a lot of detail, but I think the next meeting we'll be looking at, we did collect bids on sixty-four sidewalk extension. We're analyzing those bids right now. I think the next meeting, we should be able to provide an overview of direction and so, if our analysis goes well. And if I can, I mean, again, this is one of those things where I, you know, I kind of feel guilty in pointing at Fred and calling about on that because there's only one of Fred. And I want more of Fred. And that's why it's come full circle. That's why we're able to, that we passed this ordinance amendment tonight to try to duplicate, maybe not Fred, but somebody like Fred that can do some of his work. So with that, I'm sure there are other things I could, I could talk a little bit longer about. I'll tap out and let this end the talk or let you just talk over.
I'm just reminiscing about how many years it took us to decide to hire Fred. I'm glad you're here.
Your planner did want you to go more inside.
Okay, from my updates, we had a, everybody.
Oh.
Oops, okay, financial update.
All righty. What you have in front of you is the financial summary for the period of July first through March thirty-first. We are now, this is through month nine, which means we're at seventy-five percent of our budgets and/or projections. Looking at the general fund, overall revenues are coming in at the three million two oh seven, which is approximately eleven percent above budget at the eighty-six point four percent. So revenue is exceeding expenditures by a little over six hundred and eighty thousand. It's ahead of projections, again, that's primarily due to our receiving our Advalora and motor vehicle taxes and of course our tipping and landfill fees. So those are our big revenue producers. Overall expenditures for the general fund are approximately below budget by about seven percent, but basically on target. The, the in-conference expenditure reports details more of that information by department, which you received. And I'm still in the process of reviewing the department expenditures line by line, item detail, as reclassification is necessary, but I haven't finished my analysis. Moving on to water and sewer on the enterprise fund, currently revenue is exceeding expenditures by seven thousand and change. Both are below projections for both revenue and expenditures respectively. Again, the line item detail was provided to you in your packets as well. We did have debt service this month for the enterprise fund. We had our quarterly payment to the Central Electric, that's a twelve thousand dollar payment we pay each quarter. We also had debt service for BB and T for a little over twenty-six thousand, including principal and interest. And that was for the Credal Street project. I hope I pronounced that right, Credal. And again, I'm still reviewing the, the enterprise funds as well and do have some reclassification expenditures as well. Moving on to the capital reserve for the enterprise, we continue to receive the water and sewer access charges. This one, we received almost twenty-two thousand in fees. It was for Powell Place, for BKB, which is ninety-three Lowe's Drive and Leland Builders is another one of the developers that we received some, some funds from. So we've continued to exceed our expectations on that particular fund. So that's the, the general fund and enterprise fund. And a quick snapshot, just as an aside, I'd mentioned I've been reviewing expenditures. I've also been looking at the balance sheet as well and had to make some adjustments. And I'm hoping to get this all wrapped up by the end of this month. And so we'll be able to see that because I want to have good numbers for our budget. So I know that our year-to-date expenses are, and they really are truly a year-to-date. So my goal is to have it finished by the end of this week. So we'll have good, good final numbers for, when we're looking at year-to-date numbers for the budget. We've been busy in finance, cross-trading for utility billing with Iliana, taking over that responsibility, cross-trading and payroll. So been busy helping both Iliana and Crystal with in their new, their new duties. And we hired Cassandra Bullock in, as our front desk customer service specialist. She started April sixteenth and she's, she's coming along really well. So she's, she's catching on quickly and getting up to speed. It's kind of nice to leave her up front by herself so I can get a little of my own work done. So that's been, that's been nice. And as you know, we, we worked on the fund balance and reserve policy and you've approved that this evening. And I'm also, have drafted a purchasing protocol that I'll be bringing to you next board meeting in May. This is something that we needed to do for a grant that we applied for with the Governor's Crime Commission. One of the things that they like to see is a, is a purchasing policy or purchasing protocol. So this is just a, a protocol. As I am working on the more comprehensive financial policy, I'll throw into a lot more detail, but it's just real broad strokes. And so you'll see that when, when we have our next board meeting. So just want you to be aware that's, that's been something I've been working on as well. And still working on the budget and the CIP, we'll be presenting that to you next month as well. So busy time, but, but a good busy. And if you have any questions, I welcome them.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Okay, now updates. For say, everybody remembers last week, we had a EDC joint leadership meetings, where they presented their strategic goals for the next five years, I think it was. And I've also been attending the sort of heart and heart with community meetings. Had one of those last week where they were making a mailer package to go out to people who express an interest in Pittsburgh at these various trade shows that the.
Okay.
We're working on the various items that will be. IPO, anything you're working on? I do, I think I have Star Place, Fairgrounds. Our town Pittsburgh Merchants Association.
I missed the last meeting. I was out of town, so. But I'll make mention of something in the commission.
Okay. Okay, we started that now, Commissioner Concerns with Commissioner Perry.
I'll have everything just done, thank you.
I just have one thing. A resident contacted me about some building, something in that circle near the library. I'm assuming that DOT property. I don't know if there's any process that they can measure if they want to pitch some kind of tree and flowers.
I can follow up somebody on that.
Okay. Well, my concern is one of thanks to town staff for fixing the curves in downtown. They are aligned, they are patched, they are dowelled in. I don't think they're moving without a lot of encouragement, some automobile or something, but.
Have you noticed that a lot of the washout or a lot of the rain have receded? Have you noticed much in the way of anything, I mean, oh granted, we have to put more chits in there. Probably we're having, the floors, a lot of dirt was coming out of there and kind of.
Right.
Grannies. I haven't noticed anything.
I, I would expect now that the pathway is open, the rainwater will scour out leaves and grit and that kind of thing and be much cleaner. So I think it's going to be a huge improvement. And I want to thank everybody for taking care of that. It looks good. The other thing I have to mention is that the Main Street meeting was a pretty good meeting and there were about thirty people there. And there was pretty good energy in the room. And the group is going to follow up, have another meeting in about a month's time. But one of the things that I'm trying to convince a volunteer to volunteer to kind of take a lead role in the Main Street program from the private sector, Paul's kind of managing it from the town's perspective. But having, you know, private folks involved, engaged. And I think there was a lot of headway in that direction on the sixteenth, which was the meeting Thursday evening. And, you know, we've got this downtown visioning plan and we've got NCDOT coming to the table. And as we hear, staff is really pressed for time. And I want to find a way that we can engage this group of volunteers to help us with that visioning plan. And so, Mr. Ruzbeck, I'd like to find a way that we can get them involved and let them take some of the rains, not necessarily the rains, but take some of the energy that they have, that Paul is limited to devote to that particular exercise and see if we can enlist them to help. But I think they're ready to do it.
Yeah, I agree. And I think that's always where we want to be on that. And I think we're fortunate that we have a lot of energy in our downtown merchants now. The thing that I want to be careful of is that we're making sure that, I mean, one of the, one of the basic tenants, and I'm going to oversimplify this, but it probably really is, of the Main Street program and generalists, is they want to make sure that you have, that the town has staff, that the town has actually allocated resources to the Main Street program. So we have to be careful in that, know that there's any hard and fast rule on it. But yeah, as much as possible, ground up.
Make sure people stay engaged because I know before there was fifty people that showed up to the initial meeting and then it just went a little.
It did. And I think by having an energetic private sector person involved will help keep the group together. Because I mean, literally, and this is no fault of Paul. He's got limited time and resources and he's got a lot of tasks that he's got to manage. And so I think it's just, it's, it could be, it's designed to be a win. Like your, the Main Street program wants to have a private folks involved, engaged, the business community engaged. So we do need to make sure that the town is involved, obviously. I'm not suggesting that they take it, but I think that they are important components that here and forth has dropped away from the table. And I think we have an opportunity to get them back. So.
Mr. Wallen.
The only thing I have is a couple of people on the one has told me that the stop sign is gone again. And there's a line. And so most people who remember that they're being a stop sign, they're stopped. But one of my friends was almost ruined by somebody who was flipping her off and not sure why she actually stopped. So she doesn't want that to happen. So she said, either take the line away and there's no stop sign, or put the stop sign back. Because many people.
Was.
Credal.
And this storm came through that Cedar Tree, took that sign out.
That's what I think happened too, but that's been a long time ago now. And it's confusing. Well, that's fine. Like she was stopping. Somebody was like, why aren't you going? Because there's a busy stop sign here, so.
Okay, that puts it in my court. As I walk my dog through Powell Place, a lot of neighbors start to ask, when are we going to pave the street back there? And it's a valid question since there are no more vacant lots back there. The last house has been built. They are all sold, but they're all built now. So the cement truck traffic and whatnot is gone. So the final service code of paving could go in back there. I don't know what their plan is, but we might inquire. And note to Fred, there's an awful lot of broken sidewalk, cracked curves that cement trucks have run over. So you might want to do a, have staff do a walk, a walkthrough and with a can of spray paint to mark the curb and gutter that you expect to be replaced and the sidewalks that they run over, the dump trucks you expect to be replaced before they do that final paving out there. And hopefully we can get them to do it before the upcoming winter. They got all, they got all the spring and summer fall to do it. I hope they get it done. And the last thing is just a question. We had, we had a public hearing for a resembling preschool up near Powell Place. Have they not come back?
Yeah, I apologize. I was going to update that. You know, they apparently, Mr. Bass said they withdrew their application.
The applicant, there were two parties to the application. The applicants were thrown. But I met with the owner today and I need to discuss with Mr. Messi.
Okay, so that, that one's got to wait. I'm just curious. Okay, thanks. That's all I have. Herman?
Is the warning church at that way?
Okay. There being no further business, may I entertain a motion to adjourn? So who? Better? Close. We adjourn.